Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 19, 2017 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Board Directors. And we have a roll call, Mr. Caldwell.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Shabon?
Here.
Mr. McGurk?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Mr. Burns, and we have the invitation and the part for ladies, please.
The headquarter of our prayer, plus all schools, colleges, and especially Interboro School District, and granting this board of deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge, what is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be of benefit of others. All this to be asked in your name, amen. Pledge of allegiance, in the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right along, reports from Katie and Ariana. Please.
From the Kindergarten Academy, thank you to all for participating in the Rock Your fundraiser. They raised three hundred forty-three through donations. The spring fundraiser was also a success. Thank you to all who came out. Congratulations to the Raffle winners, Ethan Cleaver, Aubrey McDay, and Christian Diaz.
Glen Alden Human School held their book fair March 6th. The theme was Happy Camber. Career Day was on March 29th. Middle school students listened to speakers from all different careers. The PDIS Assembly was held on March 30th. Students were recognized for being honored in top twenty.
From Prospect Park Elementary, Prospect won the annual dodgeball tournament, which soon is taking home the top prize for the third year in a row. Bingo was a huge success. Their crazy sock day went well, and donated four hundred to the Down syndrome awareness of Delaware.
Congratulations to our Americanism Award winners from Norwood, who were honored as American Cross Legion and the, sorry, post five oh seven on March 15th. Congratulations to Elia Howard, Gianna Tolan, Xavier Weston, Riley Burkhiner, and Jordan Kennedy. They did an excellent job reading their essays. Eight of our Norwood bookneers attended a reading Olympics competition. The team was comprised of ten students who collectively read over a hundred books during the fifth seventy months.
From Tidical Elementary, the Read Across America celebration was very ent- very entertaining because of the three BMX bicycle rides, where the playground was turned into a bike arena. March 8th through 10th held student conferences. Those who attended received valuable information from teachers about the events in the school year. The gym was turned into a movie theater on March 24th, where Trolls was played. They were treated to pizza and soda as well. Thank you to the home and school for creating this event.
College and career night was held on March 3rd at the high school, with over fifty colleges, universities, and businesses present. Sixteen talented acts performed at our mockra on March 2nd. We raised over one thousand eight hundred dollars for the Student Capital Scholarship Fund, the most in the school history.
The annual World Language Festival was held on March 30th, and it was a great success. Student projects, including our new middle school program, were on display and eaten in the gym. Over a hundred students danced at the same time, which is also a school record. This concludes our report.
Thank you, Katie and Ariana. I would just also like to thank, on behalf of the board, Katie, good luck on your, congratulations for your acceptance to your college, and I thought we'd do it now in case you get senior eyes and they'll see from you, and to show our senior members.
Thanks.
So, thank you, yeah, everyone. Okay, moving right along, public comments. We have three people tonight, President Harris, first, Mr. Pat Quinn.
Good evening, board members, and Superintendent Riley. My name is Pat Quinn, I'm the president of Prospect Park and commissioner of the Delaware Boys Basketball. And I'm stopping by and I'd like to thank you all, Superintendent Riley and George, who are sitting at back from this team of, uh, custodians, just, I just have to say again that, uh, we have sixteen communities in this league, we have six school districts, and Interboro is the most welcoming of all my school districts. They must make, make it a pleasure to be here. Uh, we have hundred and twenty teams, sixteen hundred kids, from the age of seven to eighteen. Also, I'm sure you're aware, the girls, uh, the church and white girls, they play ball here, as well as CYO, and in every case, I just hear kudos about Interboro. So, I want to thank you all, and thank George and this team, and, uh, just, it's great to be part of Interboro. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Next, we have Mr. Sirdi Dobi.
Sirdi Dobi, ten, number nineteen and twenty. What are the rates, are there any increases in these, uh, years? What do I?
Mrs. Riley, if that's not clear, Mr. Dobi.
Good evening, Mr. Dobi. Motion number nineteen, which is the collective bargaining agreement between Interboro School District and the IEA, uh, there are increases. At this time, as the IEA has not ratified, finished ratifying their portion of the contract, um, we would prefer to hold off on providing those details until next month.
Well, that's, I don't think that's acceptable. This is a public meeting, you're voting on it tonight, and if it approves, then that means it's effective. So, I'd like to hear it tonight. Let's hear the numbers. If you don't want to read them, then my representative, Mr. Harris, should be here, because if you're going to vote on it, you have to do it publicly, if you're going to do something like that.
We'll move on, Mr. Dobi.
All right, let's hear it.
Mr. Dobi, over the course of the years, the three years, it's a one point four increase.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay.
No, over the course of the year.
Oh, over the entire four years?
Yes, yes, the average, yes.
Well, I, I got to give credit to them for accepting something like that. Uh, I think they, they're either, they're doing a very good service. Let me, let me just give you an example. I mean, it's two months before their contract is up, and, uh, I just want to give you a reference to what happened in Tidical Township. They passed a contract with one of their major groups, who was the police, in February of this past year. They're giving three percent increase, increases, uh, for a four-year contract, which thus in, which ends in twenty twenty-one, and their current contract is not up until the end of twenty seventeen. So, you're, they're giving a well in advance of them at theirs, and plus the fact that they never made any reference to the fact that they were in negotiations with the police union, which means that they just flaunted the sunshine laws of the state of Delaware. So, I have to give credit to the, uh, the IEA, if they pass it, and if they don't, then maybe they should seek for something a little bit additional per year. Number, what, what is that?
Over the four years, Mr. Dobi, it's a two point twelve increase, two point twelve percent increase.
Okay, so it's, uh, less, a little bit more than point five per year percent, or is it each year?
The averages for the total amount for the four years is eight, eight percent, but each year it averages out to about two.
And what is the, what is the status of the other individual on the Act ninety-three? Are you still in negotiations with that individual?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's ongoing, Mr. Dobi.
All right, it's ongoing. All right, I appreciate your comment, thank you.
Next, the last person we have is on the floor.
Phyllis Floyd, six, I have four fourteen, that across the park. First of all, I would like everybody to join me in wishing Mrs. Riley a happy fiftieth birthday, and, um, I hope you had a nice day, and I hope that the book I gave you helps relieve the stress.
Thank you very much.
After all, I create a lot. Anyway, getting on with, um, motion nineteen, I take it that, um, the reason why you can't speak much is because it has, it's not ratified until they vote on it. So therefore, even though you're not negotiating anything, so that's why, Mr. Dobi, they can't give you any more details than what they did. Okay, and, um, sorry. Uh, on the retirements, Kathy Comissore, bus monitor, Janet Serkin, family consumer science, and Kathy Gillian, personal care assistant, bus monitor. Um, these three people, I'm sorry, I don't know Denise Sweeney, but I'm sure somewhere along the way, I, I crossed the path with her, and I'm sure she's as good as the rest, but these three I do know, and especially the bus monitor Kathy Gillian and Kathy Comissore, I've worked with them, and we're losing two really, really dedicated people. Their heart and soul was for the kids, and, um, I wish them the best in the new, uh, adventures. And, uh, then we have motion fifteen points three, four, five, and six. And I totally understand why this is being done this way, since policies don't lapse. It's the, it's the split dollar, which is a nightmare that has been going on before I was even on the board. And while I was on the board, it's come up numerous times, and it's something that I'm not saying do something today, but just paying these to keep them, um, you know, active, isn't really enough, because what the beneficiaries are anticipating to get, and what they're going to get, it's going to be difficult to come up with the money that is needed. So, I think that should be on your mind and on the back burner, to prepare to do something to get this resolved, whether it be negotiating with the individuals, or pay the premium, whatever. The fact is, having done this before, you can't cry over still milk, you learned the lessons, but haven't done it before, we would not be paying anything now, they would have been paid on policies. So, uh, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And number fourteen, congratulations, thank you guys, to the board members that, um, have, hopefully are going to approve the repairs or upgrades that is coming from the settlement money from the airport. I think, um, it's really great, uh, we already did the playground, now we're doing this, and there's a couple more things on, on the agenda probably for next month. It's, I think it's great that, uh, Tidical School is going to be getting what they rightfully deserve. Okay, and I think my very best comment, pardon me, I'm having it.
I'm having it the bottom.
You, I do that. Okay, and, um, it was very nice to see the other night, board members agreeing to disagree, and coming up with resolution that is going to be, this is in preference to the company too. It shows that this board is truly trying to work together and respect each other. So, with that said, thank you for what I think is, uh, good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Burns, number four.
Number four minutes, motion four point one, that the following minutes of the regular meeting, the Interboro Board of School Directors held on March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. This month, our office has assisted the school district in areas of policy review, consultation on the split dollar life insurance policy issue, as well as special education, student discipline, truancy, and also provided professional development to your teachers on special education.
Thank you. Number six, Mr. Burns.
Number six, finance, I'll read all three, three really quick ones. Six point one, motion that the treasury report for the month ending March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, be approved. Six point two, motion that the fund dispersed within the amount, eight million five hundred eighty-four thousand eight, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-two cents be approved. Six point three, motion that the budget transfer through the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Number seven, correspondence.
No correspondence, my President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Moving on to committee reports, finance, Mr. McGarvey, you're off the bat.
Yes, Mr. Harris, committee report for, uh, for April. The finance meeting, we turned April third, two thousand seventeen. Some of the highlights from the year are, uh, number one, as of April two thousand seventeen, uh, the current net sit is at two million dollars, which relates to a three point four percent tax increase. The superintendent and finance director, in conjunction with district administrators, will be conducting budget views throughout the month, as the budget process continues. The one-year renewal for the district's two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen food service management company agreement was also discussed. This agreement would be for year four of five with Charp Wells, Compass Group USA Incorporated. The administrators of the district recommended that the agreement with Charp Wells be renewed for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, based on the increase in revenue and professionalism experienced over the past three years with Charp Wells. Uh, there is a motion on the agenda tonight for board to agree. The operations and technology departments present their proposed budgets to the school board. Each director discusses major increases or decreases to their prospective budgets. In addition, they presented specific items included in their budgets, such as replacement of two maintenance trucks and replacement of interactive boards for classrooms. Number four, the preliminary financial statements as of March thirteenth, thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, were also included for the board to review. And that concludes my report, President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey.
You're welcome.
GBO, Ms. Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey. GBO meeting was held on April third, two thousand seventeen. There is three topics that we discussed. First one was feasibility study of the vote. A presentation was given by Mr. McGarvey and administrators regarding critical items needed, needing attention at the foot of the district. On tonight's agenda for a vote are the data center relocation and the South Avenue Complex route, calls will be paid from the capital and bond funds, where other items will be discussed at the main, at these meetings. Second item, the second topic was, uh, the cleaning equipment replacement plan. Mr. Wolf presented to the board a report of replacement on the cleaning equipment, which is about fourteen years old and has constantly been used. The board will be discussing this more at the main GBO meeting. The last and final topic was the Tidical School projects. Mr. Wolf presented to the board the need for updating and repairing Tidical School, which is on the agenda for vote tonight. These items include new furniture to the gym, adult provisions, and outside walkover chairs, the cost to be covered by the kinetic funds assigned to Tidical School to the airport agreement. Further discussions will take place in that. Now, final, uh, finalized is my report, being moved number nine of seven.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Legislation, Mr. Burns.
Just two things I want to highlight. Number one, House Rule ninety-seven, that's coming through the, uh, as we know, legislation right now, it's a very small, uh, chip, and it's, it's nice to finally see some charter reform. Um, really, all it does is just reduce some money to specific programs, none of them are aimed at any students per se, it's more adult, uh, maybe college classes and, uh, programs, and none of it's applicable to brick and mortar schools. Um, but it, it's a step in, in sort of the right direction, in my opinion, for looking at charter reform, uh, as it hit, has now hit its twentieth year, in fact, uh, being passed in nineteen ninety-seven. And another thing to keep an eye on is there, as part of the main budget, there's been a retooling, uh, with the formula for busing. We don't know exactly what the formula is going to be, it hasn't been specified. Governor Wolf, uh, wanted to see it, and it was put in, but the, the, the existing formula is, uh, at least we take the number of kids, uh, the number of buses, and they, the mileage, and they create a formula. Governor Wolf hasn't, nor have any, anyone commented on exactly what the new formula is going to be. However, there is a nine percent, uh, cut that is proposed, so it's interesting, we're going to have to see how that, if that at all could affect us, uh, here at Interboro. So, just two things I wanted to make note of for this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Delaware County Community College, Mr. McGarvey.
Yes, Mr. Harris, uh, the Delaware County Community College, uh, board reappointments, or I should say, reappointments are, uh, only agenda tonight that are being recommended out of the board, are Stephen Gambesha, David Grossman, and Marilyn Spicer, who are suggested to be reappointed to the board of trustees. Uh, dual enrollment update, I'm privileged to report that the first graduating class in electromechanical technology included five students from Interboro School District. These students are Joshua Frenier, Richard Bell, Austin Cooley, Sean Flynn, and Larry Pop. The college's two thousand, two, uh, two, two thousand eighteen budget was approved by the board of trustees on March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, for a total of ninety-two million, ninety-one thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Interboro School District share of this budget is four hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars, and there is a motion on tonight's agenda for approval. Waiting a date for the next glazon committee meeting, and there is a tentative date of October twelfth, October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, for the school board appreciation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit, that's by me. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board has directed met on April fifth, two thousand seventeen, approved to apply for a Head Start Supplemental Assistant Program grant, approved in agreement with Denzel Group for a two-day workshop, approved a contract with Interboro School District to provide any service information on deaf culture, sensitivity training, and basic sign language vocabulary, and conversational communications. Approved revised contract with MM Architects, approved to enter an agreement with the remainder of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year for the William Penn School District to provide mass support and CTE students. Uh, approval to, uh, purchase a robotic arm. For more information, news, and information, go to DCID.org. That's it. Uh, Ariana and Katie, you are excused, thank you.
Whereas the following manager presented for action by the Interboro Board of School Directors, statement for a meeting, number nine personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved, nine point one to nine point seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number ten, retirement. I'm going to read this like motion number six, because I think it's important to recognize the person, if we could vote on it collectively there. Um, motion with regret that the following retirements be accepted. Ten point one, that the board of school directors approve Catherine Commissore, bus monitor, with twenty-nine years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Ten point two, that the board of school directors approve Denise Sweeney, elementary teacher with twenty-three years of service to the district, be approved for retirement, effective June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, under the terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the Interboro Education Association. Ten point three, that the board of school directors approve Janet Serkin, family and consumer science teacher with twenty-four years of service to the district, be approved for retirement, effective June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, under the terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the Interboro Education Association. Ten point four, that the board of school directors approve Kathleen, Kathleen Gillen, personal care assistant and bus monitor, with twenty-four years of service to the district, be approved for retirement, effective June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number eleven, Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, eleven point one through eleven point four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Motion number twelve, Mr. Burns.
Number twelve, Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion that the following items be approved, twelve point one to twelve point three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number thirteen, Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, thirteen point one through thirteen point six.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number fourteen, Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved, fourteen point one through fourteen point four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Comment, please.
Just on fourteen point three, um, I'm not trying to single out any, any one in particular company, uh, we tend to give a lot of contracts to local businesses, which I think is a great thing. Um, some vendors get more business than others, and I just would like to say publicly, and talk about it at other public meetings, uh, but with not as large of an audience, that I'd like to see some, either we, we root around with other vendors and see who else can give us some bids, or those that continue to provide services to the district, that we seek some, um, some donations back. We're going to be voting on some, some projects in a minute, and I'd like to see sometimes, uh, some of the vendors remember that, uh, you know, what our economic situation is, and be mindful, and maybe as charitable, um, when, when called upon.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Number fifteen, Mr. Burns.
Office of Finance, fifth, motion that the following items be approved, fifteen point one through fifteen point six.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Number sixteen, Mr. Burns.
This is a roll call motion.
Thank you.
Motion that the board of school directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirty of two thousand eighteen, in the form and amounts presented at this meeting totaling ninety-two million ninety-one thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Interboro School District share is four hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, and we have a roll call vote, Mrs. Caldwell.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Number seventeen, Mr. Burns.
It's also a roll call motion, motion that the board of school directors approve the reappointment of the following individuals to the board of trustees of Delaware County Community College, for a six-year term ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-three. Stephen Gambesha, David Grossman, Marilyn Spicer.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, and we begin, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Number eighteen, Mr. Burns.
Number eighteen, this is also a roll call mo, roll call motion, motion that the board of school directors approve the election of the following individuals and service members of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term of July first, two thousand seventeen to June thirty, two thousand twenty. Representing Garnet Valley, Tracy Kobowski, representing Haver Township, Russ Palata, representing Walton Newtown, Barbara Harvey, representing Springfield, Christopher DeSantis, and representing William Penn, Darren Burroughs.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. DeVittista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Number nineteen, Mr. Burns.
It's also a roll call motion. Motion that the board of school directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Inverboro School District and the Inverboro Education Association, effective July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand twenty.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Please?
Uh, just real quickly, uh, with the, looking at the retirements, we have over a hundred years of experience on the board. What that says to me is they're dedicated individuals here, uh, that are willing to stay, willing to work, and willing to take care of our children over a very, very long period of time. And I wanted to thank the IDA, not, you know, maybe in advance, but for their willingness to, uh, at least, uh, visit the possibility of putting together a contract, uh, that relieves a lot of stress, uh, takes less energy, certainly less cost to the district. And that's attributed to the fact, attributed to the fact that they're not only our largest resource, but they're our, our greatest resource. Um, they are with our kids every day, and they're what, they're who's responsible for getting our kids from K to K to twelve. Not us, you guys. So I wanted to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other comment, please? Hearing none. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Absolutely.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. DeVittista?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Yes. It's been approved, nine zero. Next motion, please.
Number twenty, this is also a roll call motion. Motion that the board of school directors approve the contract between the Inverboro School District and David Griscola, effective July first, two thousand sixteen through June thirty, two thousand twenty.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Please, Mr. Evans.
So to thank Mr. Griscola for his continued patience and hard work. He, uh, never faltered in his efforts to keep our HR department together, um, even though over all this long time it took to get his contract figured out. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Foyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Absolutely, again.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. DeVittista?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number twenty-one, motion that the board of school directors approve four-day summer work week beginning June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, continuing through the weekend in August eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Number twenty-one, Mr. Burns. Or twenty-two, twenty-two.
Uh, number twenty-two, motion that the board of school directors approve reimbursement of travel expenses for Michael Burns for his attendance at the National School Board Association NSBA Conference for Public Education Leaders in Denver, Colorado, helped from March twenty-fifth through March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, at a cost not to exceed one thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents for travel, flight, and hotel to be paid from district funds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Question. Mr. Phelps?
Yes, uh, when we passed this motion the other month, I, uh, asked about what the district was only paying for. We were told we were only going to pay for the registration fee for this, that the, uh, subject was picking up all other expenses.
Comment? Mr. Burns, we, we kicked this around last night for quite some time, and that, I was not at that meeting, so the subject in question was me, was not able to, uh, provide any information as you're leading today. And secondly, the amount of money, uh, was not known at the time. There was an early registration fee that we were trying to get, and we did get that. And there were additional costs for, uh, per diem, uh, travel, the to and from throughout the city, food. I did not put in for any of those things. And finally, you know, I was thinking about this last night, and I wasn't going to say anything, but again, you have to chime in, so I'm going to have to respond. Uh, it's just mystifying that we are in charge of an education institution here in the school district, and we're questioning whether or not our board of directors, who's in charge of overseeing this district, uh, should be further in their education. I was perplexed as to why, uh, during your tenure, Mr. President Phelps, uh, why no one went to this. So I'm, I'm happy to see that President Harris takes it seriously, and, uh, no one was misleading him. The conversation never took place. And I'm happy that I had the opportunity to go out there. I would encourage other board members to go to San Antonio next year, Philadelphia the year following. And, um, I, I was able to, to really gather a lot of information that's valuable, and I have prepared a report which I will be sharing.
Thank you. Any other comments, please?
Uh, comment?
Mr. Phelps?
I can appreciate everything Mr. Burns just stated, but as anybody else in this district that wants to go on these, they put in, uh, the paperwork not to exceed beforehand. Everything's passed before you go, and just like anybody else in this district. Why would you think any different?
Comment?
Mrs. DeVittista?
Um, you know, I, I don't think that, um, board members have really, um, taken advantage of, you know, furthering, um, education, um, on, you know, as a board member or taking advantage of going to conferences. Uh, we send, um, you know, administrators and staff and personnel to conferences all the time. And, um, since it's not something we do on a regular basis, it would be up to us to guide Mr. Burns on what the proper protocol is. I was never under the assumption that we would not pay for these, um, expenses. And I think these are things that we should be doing. We don't do it often. I think that, um, the knowledge that Mr. Burns, um, received while he was there could be a great benefit to us. Um, I would like to see, even if we're just sending, sending one representative, that we, we do these things. I mean, I, I don't think, I think the only thing that I attended was the initial orientation as a board member. I think we can all benefit from it. I think a board member should not have to pay out of pocket, um, for such an expense. He's not being, um, you know, it's just for his basic travel. Um, so I don't think he's being, um, you know, ridiculous with his expenses. I, and I think is small-minded not to consider this. It was up to us to guide him. We absolutely have after the fact approved expenses after they have occurred for other members of the district. So I don't think he should be penalized for this. So, um, I absolutely think we should approve it.
Thank you, Mrs. DeVittista. Any other comments, please?
Comment?
Mr. Chabon?
Um, my only concern that I brought up last night is that, um, I'm not sure exactly how much in the line of annual budget that we have for it. And based on the numbers last night, um, this amount exceeds that line of annual budget for professional development for the board. So that, that's my reservation.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Any other comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes seven to two. Number twenty-three, Mr. Burns.
Thank you. Number twenty-three, motion that the board of school directors approve the second reading of the following policy, effective category of community, nine hundred community, section nine thirteen point one, advertising and other commercial activities in school property.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Any old business? Any new business?
Superintendent comments?
Okay. Superintendent comments?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, first, I would like to congratulate all of the retirees that were approved this evening. Uh, I've been here for the same amount of time as Denise Sweeney. We started together the same year, a number of years. Uh, I've had the privilege of working, uh, at some point throughout my career with all of these individuals, and I cannot say enough about their professionalism and their dedication to the community and the students of Inverboro. So I wish them well in their retirement and, uh, good luck to them as they move forward. Uh, few items. I would like to congratulate the high school for raising over nineteen thousand dollars at the Four Diamond Mini Sun that took place on April seventh. There was an increase of about twenty-five hundred dollars from last year, which is nice to see. All of the money that is raised for the Four Diamonds supports pediatric cancer, the fight against pediatric cancer. So I'd like to thank everyone, uh, for their donations to this, um, important cause. A friendly reminder to all of our future kindergartners that registration is underway for the seventeen-eighteen school year. Please check out the website for registration information. Uh, we also have Wednesday hours from four to seven here every Wednesday, so parents can come in in the evening, uh, to register for kindergarten. As we head closer to the end of the school year, I would ask that everyone please check out the website for dates and information. There's a lot of events coming up, and we want to make sure that no one misses anything. Uh, also, we're offering a summer enrichment program for our students that are running throughout the month of July for all students entering grades one through five. So please check out the website as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Rod. Any other comments from the board? Comment? Mr. McGarvey?
Yes, uh, once again, I'd like to congratulate the five students from the University School District who, uh, graduated from that electromechanical technology program. Uh, it was, it's the first time they had graduation class, and five of the students were from this district. So, um, good luck to them, and I congratulate them. I also like to thank the district staff administration that, uh, assisted me with getting these two projects on the agenda and be approved that have to do with the feasibility study. A lot of time, effort, and that, and, uh, a lot of innovation and working around on different budgets and getting time that we needed to do it with them, putting them in front of, on the, on the district. And, uh, only I'd say, um, once again, happy birthday to, uh, Mrs. Rod. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I also would like to thank, uh, Mr. McGarvey and the administrators and the other staff that helped out with that feasibility study. It's quite a daunting task, and they know what compared to that, and we'll be coming up with more information as the time goes on. Any other comments from board members? I have one. I also want to wish, uh, Mrs. DeVittista a happy birthday as well. It's been a busy birthday for, uh, us up here. Okay, moving on then. And don't forget to play. When's the play? When's the play? Starts. Starts Thursday, so make sure. I think it's a little shot apart, if I'm not mistaken. It should be very interesting to see. Uh, is there something somewhere that's green? I'll clear this place out like that. But anyway, I'm sorry, I digress. Uh, on Monday, May first, two thousand seventeen, the finance committee meeting with the GBO committee will be immediately following. The GBO will be held at seven PM in the board administration. The next work session for the Inverboro School Board will be convened at the board administration building on Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM. The next regular scheduled public meeting will be back at the auditorium on May seventeenth at seven AM. With that, we are adjourned. Well, now, I'm going to have to come early.